So let's call. Are we all set with recording?
You are all set.
And John, can you please call the war, the role, please?
Chairperson Lyman's.
Here.
Mr. Benazia.
Here.
Mr. Slattery.
Here.
Mr. Charazas.
Here.
Mr. Billingsley is absent, Mr. Henkin is absent, and Commissioner Casper is absent. You have four present, you have a.
Thank you. Commissioner Charazas, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Would everybody join us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to everyone who's attending our meeting tonight. Just a brief overview, so everyone knows that you are being recorded and filmed. So if you need to do your hair or anything, makeup before you speak, just let us know. As all conversation about topics tonight will be held in the public hearing. The petitioners will have a chance to comment, staff will have a chance to comment, commissioners will be able to ask questions back and forth. After the public hearing is closed, then the commissioners will discuss amongst themselves the issue and take a formal vote on the matter before us. Right now, I'd like to see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the commission about something that's not on the agenda. No, everyone's here first. Then what I'll do is move on on the agenda to approve the draft minutes as corrected. There was a correction in one of the public comments as to their, their comments before the plan commission. By, I believe it's under Mrs. Handel, she just was neutral and did not specifically speak in favor of the chicken ordinance. She was encouraging more input from the community. So is there a motion? Are there any other additional corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our June 3, 2025 meeting. Mr. Slattery moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Charazas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great. Motion carries. Moving on to the agenda, entertain a motion to reopen public hearing case PC 2512 zoning text amendment, chickens and residential properties that's been continued from our June 3, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Benazia moves. Is there a second? Mr. Slattery seconds. You looked up. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great. John, can you give us an update about what's happened since June 3?
No, just be sworn in.
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the penalties of perjury, that the testimony about the gift should be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at the last plan commission meeting back on June 3, staff had presented the proposed zoning text amendment for, to allow chickens on residential properties. And what was presented to the plan commission included about six requirements that would have to be addressed or adhered to for chickens to be able to be kept on residential properties. So just single family residential dwellings that are at least 6,500 square feet in area. When during the public hearing, there was quite a bit of feedback from the community on these regulations. And so the plan commission voted to continue the public hearing to set up a meeting with some of those who provided comments on the proposed ordinance to allow chickens. So that meeting did occur the following week after the plan commission meeting. And from there, there was a few more regulations that were added to, to this proposal. So what I have up on the screen is essentially what came out of that resident meeting. So it was, it was attended by both those who were in favor of the chicken ordinance and then those also who just had some concerns to make sure that proper requirements were put in place for this type of, this type of view. So just going through, so what this would ultimately do is amend section six point, or Article 6 of the zoning code to add a subsection 6.3, which would allow chickens to be kept on all properties used for single family dwellings that are at least 6,500 square, square feet in area, be limited to no more than six hens on a zoning lot, roosters would be prohibited. A chicken coop would be required with a minimum setback of five feet from all, from all property lines in a minimum size of six square feet per chicken. And that chicken coops would only be permitted in the rear yard. That a chicken coop that's permanently affixed to the ground will require a billing permit and would be prohibited within a reported easement. That a chicken coop may not be located within the principal structure or any other accessory structure on the property. That a covered and enclosed chicken run shall be required, and that shall be located on the side of the chicken coop, furthest away from the nearest property line, and shall be oriented toward the interior of the property way from the property. What that is, is there was concern that a chicken run could essentially run along a property line, parallel to a lot line. So it was suggested to put a requirement on there that it does have to be oriented away from the property line. So it couldn't run parallel to a property line. It had to go towards the center of the property. That all feed shall be maintained in a, in. That no slaughtering is permitted on the property, no sale of eggs are permitted, no other poultry livestock or other farm type animals are permitted. Then all areas where hens are kept shall be clean, sanitary, and well maintained at all times with little to accumulation of any waste or refuse. All refuse and waste shall be disposed of in a clean sanitary fashion. All areas where hens are kept shall not produce or cause odors that are detectable on adjacent properties. No refused waste, feed, or any other material used or generated from the keeping of hens shall be located closer than five feet to a property line. And then chicken coop shall be maintained in a manner that provides adequate lighting, ventilation, and protects hens from cold weather, precipitation, rodents, predators, and trespassers.
That was suggested by the chicken union, right?
To protect them. So as I mentioned, this was the, were the regulations that came out of that meeting with members of the community. And so with that, I can answer any questions based on these modified regulations. I did include in the packet, just for reference, what was proposed last month, just so you can see the difference and and also to just the amount of detail that was added to, to these regulations.
Yeah, I just remember another thing that we discussed in that meeting, and that was that we would look at this, that the ordinance would be looked at in a year to see if it was sufficient or too restrictive, or if any changes needed to be made.
Correct. Right. So that was a suggestion that we look at the, because this is something that's brand new, that sometime next summer, we give it a year and then revisit it to monitor any complaints that have occurred also too, to see some best management practices that have taken place, see some success stories with keeping of chickens and discuss if there do need any changes to it. So.
Yeah, I just want to add that everyone who came to the meeting, it was a great meeting. I learned a lot about chickens that I didn't know. I appreciate it them more when I fry and bake them. I do, do appreciate all the knowledge that goes into raising chickens. Is there any questions for John right now, or? I'll call. Does anybody want to speak to the chicken coop issue? If you do, just come on forward. We'll ask you to be sworn into the public hearing. And Louise, did you want to speak? Now's your time.
Just one thing.
And if you'll just raise your right hand, you can come up to the podium. You're allowed in the intersection. Raise your right hand. Yeah. And she'll swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the penalties of perjury, that the testimony about the gift should be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to the chair, the staff, and the people that consider this issue.
Oh, your name, Louise.
Oh, Louise Handel. Nine thirty, yeah. Nine thirty-five, no, what? Washington. Anyway, thank you to the people for considering the public input, because I think it makes them feel like us feel, like there's listening and that they certainly like have a phenomenal amount, I thought, to contribute to the, to the process. And I hope that people that are uncomfortable with it will feel safer, that they're out, their views are being considered. And the people that want to do it will feel like they have some input into the best practice. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Louise. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the commission regarding this issue? I, I think it was great, and I'm glad that we learned a lot and we were more inclusive in our consideration. Does the commissioner have any questions or concerns about the proposed ordinance?
The last item.
From the chicken union?
From the chicken union. Protection from trespassers. That seems very vague. What does that mean?
You know, we, John did a great job of researching surrounding community ordinances, and that was in there. And I took trespassers to mean people who could come and take your chicken? Or even animals who are on your property uninvited that attack your chickens?
Well, that's covered in predators.
Okay.
But trespassers seems weird.
Well, I guess anyone who shouldn't be in the chicken coop. So.
Well, but where that starts to get vague is, you know, solid bars and lock and key and, you know, what is, what does that mean? How do you make it trespasser proof? That seems a little strong.
Well, and it might be a tough thing to regulate, so we could strike that.
Yeah, I just hear that that's how you define that, and that's seems very subjective to you.
Okay. Is there any public comment about striking the word trespass? Any other concerns? And questions? Thanks for the suggestion. No roosters? All right. If there's no other comment, or I want to just remind the commissioners that all questions and clarification need to take place within the public hearing. What we would do after the public hearing is closed is only give our opinions of pass or not pass and send it on to the city council committee. So.
I have one. So they don't need a permit for the chicken unless the, unless a chicken coop is permanently affixed, correct? Other than that, there's no permit, nothing, there's nothing.
Yes.
Right? Right.
Any other questions?
So John, the, the follow-up within the year is an automatic thing? Is it, you have to warn complaints first?
Uh, no, I, I think it should be an automatic, because even if we have no complaints, if we have, say, residents who contact us that want to share their experience with keeping chickens, it might not be a bad idea, just to, or have suggestions on how to make it better. So I don't think it needs to be complaint tiered. I think it's just something that, because it is a new feature in the city, that it's something we would want to revisit it, even just to make it better. It's on some.
Any items that are listed here, they automatically grandfathered going forward for the first people?
Well, so this would stay, assuming this is approved, even if it's revisited in a year, this would stay unless there is an amendment to these provisions. So we could review it, and it could be determined there are no requirements that have changed. If something does change, then yes, there might be a case where, say if it's determined that a building permit is needed for a coop, even when that can be moved. Someone who has an existing coop that's on the property that didn't get a permit, they would not have to suddenly get a permit now, which would just be those moving forward. So depending on what it is, perhaps they might be legal on. That answered your question, yes.
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
By Mr. Benazia. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Charazas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. So moving on to our discussion of the ordinance, is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance of the proposed zoning text amendment with two addition, two, one elimination of the word trespass in number 13, and the provisions that it will be reviewed on a yearly basis. Is there a sec, is there someone to make the motion?
So moved.
Mr. Benazia moves. Is there a second? Mr. Slattery, he's up again. Who's a second? John, call the role, please.
Mr. Benazia.
Aye.
Mr. Slattery.
Aye.
Mr. Charazas.
Aye.
Chairperson Lyman's.
Aye.
Four, yes, zero, no, motion carries.
So thank you to those who are here that gave us inputs. So appreciated. And John, where does this go next?
Yes, so this will go to the development committee on Monday, July 14th, so not next Monday, but the following Monday. That meeting is at six o'clock in this same room. So Monday, July 14th, six o'clock in the council chambers here.
And with them will come a report that's, with it will come a report that says this was developed with citizen input.
Yeah, much like the staff.
Okay, great. And thank you, staff, to meeting extra to, to have that meeting, to get the input. So, okay. Moving on on the agenda, public hearing of case PC 202514 zoning text amendment, temporary outside seasonal festivals. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Mr. Slattery moves.
Second.
Mr. Benazia seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? John, once again, would you be sworn in and give us some background on this petition?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the penalties of perjury, that the testimony about the gift should be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so this proposed zoning text amendment came to staff from Five Points Production, which is a tenant at 241 West Roosevelt Road, the operator of the Five Points Haunted House, which opened last fall and operated during the Halloween season as a haunted house. And what their proposal is to allow some type of outside activities to occur on the property immediately outside of the building that would be associated with the haunted house. So it would be, what would be known as a midway where patrons can gather outside, either before or after. They would have amenities such as merchandise trucks, food trucks, and essentially be a gathering place for people to interact, like I said, either before or after the context period. There is no allowable use for this type of proposal. There's no outside activity that's actually permitted within a commercial zoning district. The only outside activity that the city zoning code currently allows is in a manufacturing district. And that was essentially written for outside storage, if there's any operations that are associated with a warehouse or manufacturing facility that it can take place outside. But as far as the commercial districts go, there is no category for any kind of outside activity. So to allow something like what is being proposed from Five Points to occur, staff drafted a zoning text amendment that is, would add to the list of temporary uses on a property to add a category for temporary outside seasonal events. And so what this would be is, as you can see on the screen definitions, essentially be something that is a short term event taking place that's ancillary to the use on the property. And that it's related, although it doesn't necessarily have to be, but it's related to a particular season. In the case of what Five Points is looking to do, it would be something related to the, the fall Halloween season. So as I mentioned, this is proposed to go within section 6.8 of Article 6, which is what, where all of our temporary uses are listed. So I can just run through what some of the proposed regulations are. And a lot of this has to do with essentially what Five Points is trying to accomplish with, with their outside area. So we have proposed a limit of no more than 60 days on a property, and it can only occur one time a year. And also too, as I go through this, much like with the chicken ordinance previously, this is a new zoning text amendment that is, this type of use is new. So certainly this could be something that's also revisited after one year. So as I go through this, you know, just keep that in mind. So a temporary outside seasonal event would have to comply with all building codes, which would include the international building code, and FPA 111 safety code, international fire code, and the accessibility code. Then an event shall not interfere with any emergency vehicle accessible lanes. That it shall not obstruct any pedestrian or vehicular traffic or any parking stalls or loading zones. That a parking management plan be submitted with the temporary seasonal event permit. And so essentially what this is to demonstrate is that there is adequate parking for this to occur either on the subject property, or if there is off-premise parking, how that is going to be established, how people are going to get from that parking area to the site. So we would be looking for a site plan indicating location of the primary parking, overflow parking areas. There would have to be permission for any overflow parking area that's not on the subject property. And that that overflow parking area included an accessible pedestrian route by either vehicle transportation or, or I should say, with an accessible pedestrian route or some other means of vehicle transportation. How information related to the parking will be made to the public, the estimated maximum number of attendees at any given time, and the estimated duration of stay. Just that all parking has to occur on a hard paved surface, and that gravel, grass, moss, or otherwise non-paved surfaces are prohibited. That the parking cannot block, interfere, or obstruct any emergency vehicle accessible lanes or pedestrian areas. No parking shall occur in any public streets or in any public rights of way. That any temporary signs that are going to be included with the temporary event have to obtain temporary sign permit. That the use of mobile vendors, including mobile food vendors, are permitted, but that all county health department regulations are complied with. That peddler's license for the use of a mobile vendor such as food or merchandise be obtained. Far on this, but any, any structures, or I'm sorry, that the noise control regulations of Article 5, Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances are adhered to. That any tents or structures need to be securely anchored to the ground and shall require the issuance of building permit, rider placement. Or will rest rooms be permitted, but shall be in accordance with all county health department regulations. That trash receptacles be provided throughout the event area, that lighting, both permanent and temporary, shall comply with the zoning code. And then that, just as a catchall, that all events shall comply with all applicable state federal departments. So as I mentioned, this was brought up by Five Points Productions, which we do have present this evening. There could be other properties within the city, and they could, other commercial properties that could also take advantage of this temporary use or to promote activity on the site and have, could have a positive impact on the local economy. So we do have, as I mentioned, we have Five Points present this evening, but I can answer any questions this time.
So where else in the city could this take place? At Main Street?
This could occur on any commercial, commercially used property that's owned commercial. So on Main Street in the downtown may be difficult because there's not much outside area.
Right, to fit all these requirements.
Right. So it's really going to be limited based just on the site layout conditions.
So Menards?
Menards could potentially be.
His hardware could do it.
Yeah, a big thing that is going to come into play though is being able to use a site where you're not impacting parking. The location of 241 West Roosevelt Road, there is a open space area that can be utilized, so it's a little bit easier, but it could occur under other conditions.
What about carnival type rides or something? Same Menards wants to put in a carnival.
So that is a good question, and I had actually in here, and I think it should go in here, under the, out the definition for temporary outside seasonal event, that it does not include carnivals, amusement parks, drive-in theaters, circuses. What, and so I would actually suggest we have something like that to make it very clear that those types of uses aren't permitted. What would prevent something from like an amusement or a carnival ride is the noise regulations part to it, and also the lighting. The lighting requirements that have to be adhered to can't have any spillover of lighting on adjacent properties. So those, those two, those two requirements with noise and lighting would probably prevent somebody from being able to do that. Also too, you wouldn't be able to have any kind of extension cords or anything like that associated with this. Everything has to be hardwired. I would though, however, still suggest that be put into the definition.
Well, and would this affect park district property? No.
No.
So if the park district wanted, they used to hold a circus at the park district property, but that would be separate.
Right. That would not be. Because that's just associated with. Okay, that's taking place in a park.
Any other rising questions?
Anthony Jewel puts up a tent every year for flowers. Is that following?
Yeah, so that's a, another temporary use category for grocery stores and partner stores. Can have temporary outside seasonal products that are some, so, so yeah, that's already addressed. And they have to get a, every year, they have to get a current.
So I guess back to D. So that means their, their site is, yeah, I looked only briefly at, at the site. I didn't look at it in detail. I haven't pulled up now, but doesn't use any parking stalls or loading or whatever. That would seem hard to do because you have certain parking requirements for any commercial property, and you're not going to regularly have an online place or whatever. So can you beat that? Because in addition, we're also saying that you have a temporary parking plan, whatever. So my thought, aside from carnival rides and whatever, is that you're taking up space with tents and, and other things, and you're going to need to be consuming parking stalls. So it seems like kind of a mismatch with temporary parking plan. And where do you put this temporary stuff if you can't put it in parking stalls? I can see avoiding, you know, handicapped accessible parking and working around that, but.
Yeah, I mean, for this particular site, there is, and what they're proposing is not by any means a large festival area. It's more of a gathering spot in midway. So it's by no means something that, like if you refill up a Menards parking lot with different activity. So they do have space to do what they want to do.
Okay.
Um, and so this isn't, the intention of this isn't necessarily to try to have very large scale events. It's to allow some establishments to have some outside activity where they can't do anything right now. Like say if a bar were to have an Oktoberfest, if there was an area right outside of the, the restaurant or the bar area, they could do something like that. So the intent isn't really to have, to just max out on a property with everything. So I, I don't think we necessarily want to open it up to parking areas just yet, because if, if that, we'd rather have those areas reserved for people to park at and still have ample parking, rather than go to the Plan B option of the overflow parking. So.
Yeah, again, it just seems kind of counterintuitive why, you know, you're going to have the overflow parking. Because to follow along with your Oktoberfest option, if you had an establishment that is restaurant slash bar, they're not likely to have some wide open space. They, I would think they would temporarily set up tent or whatever in their parking lot and be. tent or whatever in their parking lot and be consumed parking spaces. So it's not necessarily wrong. It just seems counterintuitive with D and then the parking plan and, you know, the feasibility. If, if for their specific site, it, it works, that's fine, but if this may only be then fitting for their particular site based on these items.
Yeah, and, and, um, I mean, the alternative to that would be if you were to use any parking stalls, you would have any parking stalls that are lost from that to have in your parking management plan, how you make up those parking stalls. So say if you you take away twenty parking spaces for an event, I would say you'd have to then within your parking management plan, explain how you're accounting for those loss, those twenty loss parking spaces.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense. And that seems more aligned with parking plan than if you're expecting doing something extra. You may be expecting extra people than your normal parking slots that are, you know, allocated based on your building square footage and whatever, that, you know, the parking plan makes sense to offset and make sure. And it seems like that, that's a collaborative functionality to go with special, because it's a short-term limited time event anyway. Taking advantage of, you know, something seasonal, it seems like that kind of would go hand in hand.
So are you suggesting to take out D?
I'm suggesting to take out the parking stalls part, the step D.
Or what I would say maybe is add on to the sentence of shall not obstruct pedestrian or vehicle traffic or any parking stalls, loading zones unless, unless those parking stalls are I'll think of a better way to put it, but accounted for within the parking management.
Yeah, or I guess even to go back to what you said, that, you know, kind of your parking management plan compensates for any parking stalls again. So I'm not giving you explicit wording, but a hand.
But unless compensated in the, um.
Should be addressed in the parking plan.
Is it referred to multiple use properties? The Menards has the outlets. Or is it referring to just singly?
Well, it's intended just for the, the subject property. So wherever that business is located, it, on that particular parcel. So say if an outlaw, say if, um, steak and shake were, wanted to have some, something like this, they couldn't use necessarily Menards. Cause it's, that becomes an offsite temporary use. So it's really no different than somebody rented an hour.
But could they put that in their parking plan?
Uh, I, I would say not to go that route because the intent is it's whatever is taking place is ancillary to that use on the property. So if, say if someone were to use Menards parking lot for a, some type of event, but it has nothing to do with Menards.
Oh, okay. I, I was saying with your steak and shake example, could steak and shake go to Menards and, and use?
Oh, they could use a part of the parking. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, as long as they got permission.
Yeah, I was just following your example.
The traffic management plan couldn't be less than the ordinance requirements for parking for a certain usage purpose. I mean, some, some facilities have more parking than they need, so they need to put these structures in. But they wouldn't put it to a point where they can't have bring, people wouldn't come for the pretty part. So the traffic management plan would it can account the new purpose, the old purpose and what's available.
Yes, yes.
Or it should.
Right.
So say an organization, say an organization wants to hold a temporary beer fest and they get permission from Menards to do it on their property. That would be okay.
Not the festival, just the park.
Just the parking. They couldn't do the festival because Menards isn't sponsoring. It's Menards property and Menards would have to sponsor the festival.
It would have to be something, you know, right, put on.
Okay, so, um, there's no Main Street businesses that have access to Turner Court? Could they do it?
Not on private property. So you, you wouldn't be able to use the public right of way.
Okay. I'm just trying to think of all the examples where this, cause it could grow. Like you said, it's an economic benefit to the town and it could grow at what, where does it limit people and where does it not? The off-street park, the side street parking, um, railroad days festival. Would that fall under this ordinance or is that of its own?
No, that's its own. Yeah. So that's a, a special event that uses city services. Um, so that, that's totally different, but.
So it wouldn't fall under this. It would never be governed under this.
I, I do like this, uh, associated for businesses in the city that I, they could potentially like, or say maybe grow into something else or, you know, we can see how it goes from here, but I think it's gonna be nice for for the city of Chicago to have businesses, put something outside and it's just for the summertime, summertime here is limited. So.
Yeah, I, I don't see this working on Main Street at all, though.
Not, not what's proposed. No, I don't think realistically. You, you would have to do, really in a downtown, it would be a case of doing something within the right of way. So on public sidewalk, um, which, which is something that's possible, but it, it would not be this. It would have to be uh, like a license agreement to operate on, on, uh, public sidewalks.
Well, meanwhile, we've been, we've, we've ignored the people who are here to talk to us about their plans. Is anybody from five points want to come and address the, uh, the commission? If so, thank you. And just we'll have you raise your right key and be sworn in and state your name and address.
You solemnly swear or affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony about the deal shall be the truth, the whole truth and the amount of truth. Thank you. Name is please.
Jesse McKay, twenty-seven sixty Leaden Drive, Washington. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't have, I don't have much to say. I think John's explained kind of like what our use and need is, I, you know, we're attempting to compete or be as, uh, you know, along the same lines as other haunted attractions that are within the city, you know, Chicago area. And this is a very popular one and, and you know, one of the things I think from a safety perspective is just what, what we kind of saw last year was people came to the event or our show, went through the show and then just kind of left. And I think like having a place for them to be afterwards versus just like hanging out in our parking lot. You know, un, un kind of like monitored by us is a preferable way of of, uh, engaging with our customers and, you know, and, and that happened quite a bit. So I, and I, and just also as another example, like I think like Hawthorne's backyard, like while their grandfathered in, I think is a similar kind of like situation. Like they have a lot of property. They have activities that are going on outside. Um, so I think that's another, uh, area that kind of appears to.
Where are you on?
Um, do you know the bowling alley?
Yeah, the one on the north side.
Do you know those scary looking barns in Sedesta?
Hey, we did a lot of good dancing in there. Yeah.
I come back a little bit different.
Yeah, we had a lot of proms there. Um, so, um, is there any questions or?
Is there anything in what's written that, you know, is concerning to you as far as restricted to what you're trying to accomplish?
No, I mean, I, I think this is, this is great for us. Um, you know, I mean, we, we are kind of, we have a season, so, so it works. Um, I think like, but I think this is a great first step. I think like if we were going to be able to do other events that are outside of the season, we'd love to, you know, come back um, down the road and, and see if there was a way to open this up to, um, you know, a longer duration or, you know, smaller durations throughout the year, but other than that, I'm very happy with this.
The Easter Bunny visits the haunted house.
You haven't got to the haunted house, you have to go.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Thank you. Yeah, the only other place I thought this could happen is the place that's the old school, um, fifty-nine. You know, they have some property there. So that would work if as long as, but they don't have a lot of parking, so they'd have to worry about the parking. And that's where the no sign street parking would make sense. You know that they opened the cooking school?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
If they wanted to have some sort of food festival or something?
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. The, um, but even though there might not be onsite parking, if, if they had some parking arrangements set up and transportation to their.
Shuttle bus or whatever. Is there anybody else who'd like to talk to the, um, talk to us or give us input about this proposed ordinance? You know, I do want to say at some point, I probably should have said it in my opening comments, that we are advisory only. That we are here to hear citizens' comments because we as citizens are representing citizen voices to the city council. And I usually like to add, we have no power whatsoever. You know, we're just here to give us, give our opinions. That's why it goes to the city council after that. So are there any other questions? Any other?
I
I.
Securely anchored to the ground. Does that mean like drilled into the ground or they have like weighted stuff on the legs of tents? Is that sufficient?
Well, it, it has to meet the building code. So the building code is going to dictate how it has to be anchored.
Okay.
Um, that could be anywhere from if it's a tent, it has to be staked properly. Or if it's more of a structure, it may have to have a permanent foundation. So essentially the sorry, the, um, the anchor, anchoring is going to be dictated by whatever the building code requires depending on the type of structure, the size. So it's really, it's, um, it, it's not something that, uh, could be subjective that would, we would take it on a case by case basis. It, it has to follow. Yeah. However, a tent has to be anchored to the ground per, um, I think it's in the fire code. That's how it have to be. Um.
Okay. Yeah, that's good.
So a bucket of sand isn't going to do it.
Long as it's defined.
Yeah.
Somewhere, we're just following what's defined. That's okay.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? Reminding everyone that all questions have to be addressed in a public hearing. Great. Well, it's another way to expand, um, the community access to activities. Hearing no other, hearing or seeing no indication of further questions, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
That's for you.
Yeah. Okay. Now we need a second. Okay. Cause Mr. Slattery is never going to look up again at me. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. So moving on to the agenda now, let's, um, enter our discussions of public hearing PC twenty-five fourteen zoning text amendment, temporary outside seasonal festivals. Is there any discussion? If not, entertain a motion to, um, approve the submission of or, uh, to amend section four point one of article six definitions, construction of terms to create a definition for temporary outside seasonal events with the correction on item two B thirteen D to include the language unless compensated in the master parking plan. Are there any? Is is there a motion?
Yes.
That's so.
Waiting for you to finish.
Mr. Benazian moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Terrasus. John, please call the roll.
Commissioner Benazian.
Aye.
Commissioner Terrasus.
Aye.
Commissioner Slattery. Chairperson Lyons.
Aye.
Four, yes, zero, no, motion.
And where's this going next?
So this will go on Monday, July fourteenth at six o'clock in this room with the development committee, which is half the city council. So and then from there, they'll make a recommendation on the full city council.
Great. Thank you. I don't know. You don't have to stand and sit through the rest of the meeting if you don't want to. You're free to leave. We are not offended. Um, moving on on the agenda, move to review and recommendation of case PC twenty-five fourteen. Our zoning text amendment temporary outside, oh, I'm sorry. Wrong, wrong. We're just going to generate a discussion of public hearing signs.
Yes.
I got, I didn't cross it off my agenda, so I was confused.
So, uh, yeah, this was a topic.
You're done. Okay.
Uh, so this was a, uh, topic brought up by Commissioner Slattery on the our hearing signs and a potential to, um, revise the requirement for a, a hearing sign. So I, I put up on here on left side, this is what West Chicago's hearing sign requirement is. It's six square foot sign. That's minimum three feet off of the ground, has to say public hearing notice, um, describes that the property is up for a public hearing. When it is, the time, where it's at, the case number, and then a general description. My phone work, uh, for them to call.
For the call, John.
Um, and, and we've had previous discussions on
Yeah.
Hearing signs, um, before, you know, it's it's hard sometimes to get it where you have a lot of information and it's still readable, especially if it's on North Avenue or Route fifty-nine or Roosevelt. Fifty miles an hour, you're not really going to be able to read any of that. So, um, this is an example that Commissioner Slatter actually provided to, uh, to me. This is from Naperville. Um, so it's, it's the same height. It's twice as wide though, so you can get, um, more text. I'd say probably larger though. And I think there was some, there's a coating or reflective.
Oh, you know, I mean, some communities they'll provide the signs because they're just generic. And, uh, Joe, the regular sign is retro reflective and the lighter, like a stop sign, a regular street sign, which is lights will shine if you live on.
Yeah, um, and you're, you're right. I, I know in, uh, Glen Allen, um, it's one generic sign that just says this property up for public hearing for more information, call. It doesn't have the, um, the details that, that ours has. So thi- this is actually not codified, though this is just based on past practices. Zoning code essentially says petitioner has to place a public hearing sign with, uh, according to the zoning administrator, how it needs to be installed. It doesn't have the set number. Doesn't have any size limitations or minimums on it. So you know, we could look at it and explore doing something different, um, than this. We wouldn't need to have their code changes. Not written word for word like this. But yeah, I, I think this is a topic we, we've discussed in the past, they trying to get hearing signs. So they're not just uh, just checking a box because oftentimes the hearing sign goes up and people don't even see it because it's just not in very prominent place or it has information.
What I would like to see is that they be bilingual, that there be Spanish included on it. So that maybe less information, but then you could if it's a four by foot sign, maybe you could do half in English and half in Spanish or something like that. Yeah, that we, that's what we brought up before.
And yes, and it was not, uh, I get approval. But what, what staff has done though is for larger uh, larger cases such as the redwood development that took place on North Avenue, say a quick trip were to come back. Uh, for redwood, we required the developer to do two signs. One was in English and one was in Spanish. Um, so it was, what was recommended to, the direction that staff was given, um, when that was discussed was use your discretion on larger projects. Or having now if we lessened the amount of text, then there would be room to.
Right. You did public hearing, public hearing and then just said call for details or just the date. Yeah. I mean, I don't know that people need the case number and things like that, but the date of the public hearing and time, um, and I don't think the time would have to be bilingual. So you're just saying public hearing is bilingual. In both languages and for information would be in both languages. But even on smaller projects, I think the signs are smaller. But I still think it warrants two seconds. Especially in residential areas. I think it still warrants.
Two signs or.
Or one sign that's.
Two.
That's two languages. Yeah.
I mean, I've. Seen agendas and then I noticed the signs, so that's, and they've been right by my house, the academy one. I. I'll buy it for like two weeks, right? And they're posted for two weeks and then I'll sell the guy, so. They're they're not big enough. I gotta stop and take insurance.
Yeah.
That's like.
So bigger.
Yeah, this one has red on it, like if if the the city goes out anyway, put them up, so we put them up anyway.
Who who has the cost of the signs? The petitioner?
Yeah, yeah, the petitioner. So they. They are, they make the sign themselves with whatever sign company they want to use. As long as it meets these uh requirements of the size and what it says on there. And there's some other requirements too. I didn't even include it on here necessarily, but um, but yeah, it is the petition.
And there are some agents who that do like a changeable message sign. They're so involved.
Whoa.
Baby steps, God. Baby steps.
Is there anybody who has any thoughts and would like to address the commission on this? I mean, just normally come forward and and let us know what you think. It's not a public hearing, so. You don't have to be sworn in and you don't have to swear at us.
That I was surprised to see this on the agenda, not surprised, but I had a couple of people recently mentioned this to me in just June, not because I discussed this with anybody. About several different locations that we've all been like, what the heck? So somebody said something to me and they were describing and she wasn't very good. Turned out to be the shuttle station. Down over there and she like, there's a sign there. Do you know what it is? And I'm like, no. You know, and it and it's been empty for forever and. So she was saying, well, you couldn't safely get out of my car. And I said, well, I know how to get out of my car there because I got out of my car for some other issue over there recently. Um. So that's come up with her, texted her to say, hey, you know, this is just on the agenda tonight. If you would have something you want me to say. Um, so the thing that she had to to get feedback on was. The size. There's no way you could read most of these. The one that was for whatever that was quick.
Quick trip.
Over there in the woods on fifty nine, like. I actually went by there multiple times trying to figure out how I could get out and read it, like where would I park and how would I walk? And would I get hit by a truck? You know, so um she thought that she saw found them in the public domain somewhere. That these would are posted. And I think, I think I also saw what she said. So is this on the on the website?
Yeah, so there's three notification requirements. There's the public hearing sign, which the petitioner does. Uh, the petitioner also has to send by certified mail a a notice to all property owners within two hundred and fifty feet. Then the city will uh publish the notice within the daily hearing, so at least fifteen days prior. What we have been starting to do and it hasn't um. Think it is totally starting up, but what the city wants to do is to have more of a public notice portal.
Right.
On the website where all this information goes to. And then that, because it's on the website, it could get blasted out then through social media, which is probably. That's going to be the most effective way, unless you're going to get sent to your home. Um, it's going to be more effective than. Seeing a sign out on on the the property or. You're reading it.
Yeah, and I think the sign is helpful in that it's like something's happening here. But. To go figure out, I did the same thing, even I think it was Washington, I don't know, over by the apartments there, jumped out of my car, took a picture with my phone, jumped back in and, you know. Hope nobody else wanted to get in that space. Um, so I don't know that much about this, but I don't know. Could you put a QR code there?
We talked about that and we said that that you're driving fifty miles an hour, a QR code isn't going to help you.
Right.
You know, because then you're out jumping out and then getting the QR code. Yeah.
So I didn't know how many of these are on inaccessible properties or or whatever. Um, but the feedback I got from the three or four people that just randomly was, why can't I just go on the website? And.
See.
See. So.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so that makes sense. If you just have the words public hearing and the date, then they could go to the city website. And get the information.
The case, yeah, the case, whatever that number would be.
Yeah, but yeah, I think uh the website address and also.
Yeah.
Something we hit, there's a little unrelated, some, an issue we have run into is um. Oftentimes applicants don't remove those hearing signs and they're on private property, so the city can't go on the property and. And remove it and um. Eh it it's a challenge sometimes to get uh to to get someone to those sites. I've seen, I saw this in the the Business Center a lot of times. There would be construction going on and they would be working around the hearing sign that had taken place six months prior to. Breaking ground, so that's that's something else we're trying to figure out because then people will see a sign from a year ago. And. It's it's confusing.
Is that an ordinance issue that they have to be removed after so many days?
Uh, there. Well, you don't, you have to have it at least fifteen days prior. There's nothing that says you have. Bit. Um, and I guess it's. Free speech, but it's just, it's misinformation, and so we don't.
So the date should be huge so that when people see. Something from twenty twenty four, they know that it's over.
Yeah. Yeah, what I would like is to have them. Be required to remove that prior to within a certain amount of time after.
That makes sense. Well, thanks for bringing this up.
Oops, uh.
Oh, yeah, well, come on forward. Just tell us your name again.
Uh, Tracy Brown.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say that I like the idea as a. Member of the community, I like the idea of it being in both languages and I just want to at least put that out there so that. Whoever gets the final say understands that the community doesn't want to see that. So I don't even speak Spanish, but I think it's necessary in this community so that we can all be included.
Right, yeah. I'm thinking about the ball part, ball seemed to have something down in the south side of town. It would have helped to have it bilingual, you know? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions, discussions? So where does this go from here? How do we do this?
Yeah, but I can do pause and let us speak if you're going to ask for.
Oh, no. Yeah. I'm facing three men. I'm not going to give you a chance.
So I. I like the example on the right. I think the increased size is better. I think less information on the signs is better. I think mixed case text is better. All caps is really hard to read. Uh, and keeping it as simple as. Possible. You know, the example on the right gives the city hall address twice. You know, it seems like you can shorten that down and. You know, less is more. You know, you've got the the red text with large. Large letters to make sure you draw an attention. Here's what it's for. Um, but keep it short and simple, you know? Phone number, website, date. You know. Um, I think that helps because then you can either make a text on there. Larger and it's really hard to read all caps text.
And if the city provided a sign, they could put their logo on.
I agree. Date, time, address. I'm what is it?
John, you said some, some cities or Glen Allen was your example that they provide it and they just kind of replace.
Yeah, there's not even a reply. It it really just says this property is up for public hearing. For more information, please contact. So it's a, it's really just an attention-grabbing device.
It doesn't give the date or anything?
No.
Okay, yeah, I think you want that so that you know, hey, at least. If this is the date of the meeting related to the property of, you know. Uh. Breadcrumbs to to trigger you to look elsewhere, you know, phone number, website. You know, to get the details. You draw the attention that there's something going on.
Hmm.
And. Something go for more detail. You know, I don't think it's value to put, you know. A whole bunch of information on public hearing for X, Y, Z, E, Q, paragraph, paragraph, paragraph. That'll be even harder to read if they're drive it back.
Hmm.
Anything else? Any other input? Thanks for bringing to their attention. Um. Um, all right. So what will happen with this information that we've given this feedback we've given you?
Yeah, what I could do is I could uh put together kind of a mock-up of that would replace that we have on the. Um, per review. Discuss it more, so I can actually put together. What we would give out to applicants as town who would create their sign.
And in that you could include that it must be taken down by. Within so many days.
Yeah, that would require a code change, but we can certainly bring that up at the same time. So, yeah, we we could discuss both.
Okay. Okay. Is there anything else you want to update us on? Going on in the city or what's going to be happening?
Uh, so next month, we are. There's been interest in having uh more activity. You brought this up, actually, more activity on um sidewalks in the downtown. Um, so we will have some uh type of text amendment that um. Would. Kind of modernize our. Regulations on sidewalk sales. Which the city allows, but it's not very descriptive as to how and when it can occur. And it's it's very limited, even though it's not descriptive, it's limited as to how much you can do it, so. Um, we'll be bringing that back for our discussion.
And we discussed about tables, we're letting through tables and things outside because we just did that.
So that was, yeah, that was for outside CD, uh, outside eating areas.
Anything else development-wise or anything coming up?
Um, the, but right now, no.
They've got a plan. Um, any questions for John, concerns? Look into the side signs. Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Smooth.
Mr. Slattery.
Second.
Second for Mr. Terrazas. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. See you next month.